It's time for the meeting, but we don't have a quorum. Please ring the bell for members to come in. We lack one.
Call a call in.
Please try together, members, for the meeting.
There's another one.
The one who is in charge of the communication.
The one who is in charge of the communication. Then it will be this one.
It's written there.
Here. This one, this one is Susie and Liu Mingguang.
Liu Mingguang, he's not here. Liu Mingguang is a related person, not an official.
Liu Mingguang is a person in the communication department. He's the head of the department.
He's in the news department.
Yes, but then because of CA, it was changed. First, one, two, three, four, done.
Okay, then we...
Okay, we have a quorum. And it is one minute past the appointed time. We have a quorum, and thank you, Long Hau, for just making it. When we have started, you can leave, because we have to have a quorum to start the meeting. Let us now invite the deputations to come in.
咦，Liu Mingguang is not here. He's in a hurry.
Who?
He's in a hurry. He's in the communication department.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just now, there were some rules that were introduced.
Today, except for the deputations,
we have officials. They are dwindling in number. The secretary has said that he won't attend this session, and the PS has another meeting. What we have with us are just Mr. Zhou Wong, DS for Commerce and Economic Development, and also Mr. Aaron Liu, PAs for Commerce and Economic Development. We have also invited Mr. Liu Mingkuang from the Communications Authority. And there are two representatives from the Digital Broadcasting Corporation, Hong Kong Limited, Mr. Albert Chang. You have not been dismissed. You are still the founder, president, and editor-in-chief, right? And the other one is Mr. Morris Ho, chief executive officer of DBC. Deputations are coming in. This is the third session and the last one of this special meeting to receive views from the public. It will run for two hours. Members can also speak. After taking the views of the deputations, members can then speak. Mr. Albert Chang and Mr. Morris Ho can also speak.
Their list is this one.
It's so big. Yes, you follow this one.
各位，今天...
Members and deputations, the purpose of this special meeting is to take the public's views on the discontinuation of service of DBC. First, we like to welcome everybody at the meeting. On my left, we have deputations, and I'd like you to pay attention to this. You can now wear the earpiece. And also in front of you, you have different channels. Channel zero is the floor. Channel one is Cantonese. Channel two is English. I'd like to remind you that apart from political councillors and designated officials at the meeting, other people at the meeting will not be protected or exempted by the Legislative Council powers and privileges ordinance with regard to what you say here and the submissions that you give us. This is the third session. We will now start, and each deputation will be called upon to speak one by one. You have three minutes each, and you have to stop when the three minutes are over. When you speak, and if you have already got a submission, just let us know the gist of the submissions, because some of your submissions can be long and cannot be read out within even five minutes. And of course, if you hate somebody at the meeting, you can disregard your submission altogether and just lash out at those people. This is a very open forum, but as a chairman, I can allow you to shout, even if I shout myself most of the time here. But today, I'm the chairman, and I would also ask the public gallery to cooperate. And actually, the person that you would like to shout at is not here, so there is no target for shouting at today. First of all, Mr. Cheng Wei Yan, three minutes. Thank you, Chairman. Ever since DBC started broadcasting, tuning into digital broadcasting has become part of our life because the programs are excellent. There are public affairs programs which would reflect on public affairs in great depth, and it plays the role of monitoring the workings of the administration. And there are phone-in programs where we can dial in and speak our mind freely. And also, there is diversified music channel which provides high-quality programming. And what is most important is that it is true. DBC is so true. This is what is lacking in the broadcasting field today. DBC has been with us for a very short time. Even if that's the case, it has impressed the public. The more we listened to it, the more we loved it, and it has become our bosom friend. But it's unfortunate that DBC was only broadcasting formally for not even a month before it discontinued with its service, and now there is no sound coming from that digital radio. And to us, it's like one of our closest relatives has left us, and it's difficult to describe how we feel. The Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, Mr. Greg So, has always told the public that this is pure commercial dispute, that the government has no role to play in this. But when DBC applied for a license, shareholders promised in writing that they would put in $600 million in faces. But then, now only $15 million have been plowed in, and they have said that they would stop the investment. Why is it that Mr. Greg So has not even publicly reprimanded the investors or shareholders? The licensing process was an extremely stringent one, and yet it has discontinued service just like that. On the one hand, the administration said that you would like to promote digital broadcasting, but we do doubt the truth of what you said. The airwaves are the public asset of the public, and you have to safeguard broadcasting on the public airwaves, and this is your duty, Mr. Greg So. You get $300,000 odd in salary every month, but you are just the third-generation human voice recorder, and you have been repeating yourself. You're just rehashing old tapes, and you're insulting the intelligence of the Hong Kong public. In fact, would it be like what people are saying, that this is political suppression? And we actually doubt that there is some truth in this statement. We hope that Mr. Greg So will rectify his act. Please do not pretend to be sleeping. Do something for the public. Your time is up. Ms. Elsa Fan.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. I am a listener to DBC, and I've been tuning into DBC for just half a year. I have been tuning into other radio stations, but after I have tuned into DBC, I wouldn't listen to any other radio station. I was attracted because there were quality programs and also hosts on DBC. I have tuned into it once, and I would like to tune into it forever. Within the half-year that I listened to DBC, I had the best time listening to the radio. I would turn, switch it on when I wake every morning, and when I go home after work, I would always go home and switch on DBC immediately. But then, on one day, I heard from Na Lam Guang, the program host, said that the investors would not invest anymore, and he said that he would do his utmost to support Albert Chang. On that day, there were 8,000 people at Chater Garden, and I had to go to work, so I couldn't go. I asked some netizens to take some food to them. And then I read the news after work. I watched TV. And then I found that it was absent from the news clip. And then the next day, I read newspapers, but I could not see any reporting of that event. I was so alarmed. Why is it that the majority of the Hong Kong media would actually keep that piece of news out of the door? And that amounts to keeping out freedom of speech. And then government departments, of course, turned a deaf ear to the entire event, and I was so angered. So I joined as a volunteer. I chose to take care of some elderly people outside CGC. They are the people who needed our help most. But what I saw was... I was so impressed and, in fact, alarmed by the forbearance of the elderly. There was one elderly person who was accompanied by, let's say, her daughter. She just came back from Canada, and she immediately went to CGC. She was 90 years old. Actually, the point is, why is it that the audience have chosen to become volunteers for DBC? We have sacrificed our time on our rest days, and we also contributed money and time and energy. And why is it that so many famous hosts and back-office staff chose to have their salaries reduced and even went along without salaries in order to support DBC? Recently, a black cat was tortured to death, and the police actually went in so quickly in order to crack the case and also arrested three persons. You remember Sunbeam Theatre? It was about to close, but then somebody intervened, and it was reopened. Public airwaves. Sorry, your time is up. Next. Mr. Chan So Hing. Chairman members. I'm just an average listener of DBC. Mr. Greg So, the S C E D is not here, but this morning, he said that the administration wouldn't like to see discontinuation of service, and he wouldn't like to mix freedom of speech with people matters and other matters. I'd like to say, Mr. Greg So, I think you are talking nonsense. Just do some soul-searching. I think you have wanted DBC to discontinue service because DBC has always been criticizing the government ever since it started service. And even when it broadcast traffic news, it was ironizing the relevant secretaries. And you just want to package this discontinuation of service into a commercial dispute involving Mr. Bill Wong. At the last ITBP meeting, Mr. Greg So already said that he admitted that on the 26th of September, together with Albert Chang, founder of the DBC, and also Mr. Morris Ho, he met with them. And then coincidentally, on the 27th of September, Bill Wong applied for an injunction from the court so that Albert Chang and other shareholders could not comment on the dispute of shareholding anymore. I really think that the two incidents are related. Is it actually that Mr. Greg So in secret gave wind to Bill Wong and his group of investors so that DBC did not respond to the request of Albert Chang and Morris Ho to ask the other investors to discharge the duties? But you actually dealt another blow to them. How can you do something like that? DBC has its philosophy, freedom. I started to tune into DBC on a long-term basis in August, but once I did, I found that it was so different from other radio stations. It had its philosophy as freedom, and that everything could be laid open in front of the public. When the Hong Kong media are taking size gradually, we cannot hear the same kind of programs on other radio stations. The Radio Hong Kong put its few digital channels together with the CCTV public affairs program and lumped them together as a digital channel. That is not free broadcasting. We like to have digital broadcasting so that we can have DBC, not Radio Hong Kong, not Phoenix Radio. I will ask Greg So to investigate into the incident immediately.
Okay, next, Madam Lo Yung Lan. Chairman, dear friends, good afternoon. I'm just a normal housewife. I'm here today because I want to talk about the silencing of DBC and how that has affected me. For a very long time, I have been listening to the radio. Since the DAB licenses have been offered by the government, the DBC has been established. I have purchased four radios. And now, I cannot listen to their programs anymore. I feel that I have been plagued by the government because the government issued the licenses, and you have collected the license fees. Now that there are problems other than collecting a penalty, what else has the government done? Our request has gone unheard. We have gone on hunger strikes. The government does not care. After DBC has gone off-air, I feel very sad and troubled. I'm depressed, and I'm angry because the rights that I deserve has been taken away from me. I have been crying for no reason. I lost sleep. Why? Because DBC has become part of my life. DBC, I listen to you all day long, from 6:00 AM when I prepare breakfast for my family. I can hear Lee Kam Hong about the weather and the news after my family goes to work. I do my exercises. I can listen to Albert Chang and Mr. Lam to talk about current affairs. And then I can listen to other programs after I have purchased food for dinner. So there are programs with me when I'm doing my household chores. And in the afternoon, there are some programs about cooking and running a kitchen. At 5:00 PM when I prepare dinner, I listen to another program run by Wong Wei Man and Chan, so on and so forth. They are like my teachers. They enlighten me. They allow me to understand it other than caring for my family in the kitchen. I should pay attention to the society. When I'm cleaning the dishes, I can hear Mr. Meg and Miss Chan's voices. So DBC has enhanced the quality of my life. Finally, I would like to say one thing. Return DBC to me. Next, Mr. Anthony Lam. Chairman, on the 11th of January last year, Cathay Pacific staff went on a strike to renegotiate the contract terms with the employer. And we have seen some other labor disputes. On the 12th of July, Watsons had another dispute, and the Labor Department intervened, urging both sides to have dialogues. Airlines are above us, and also people can order water from Watsons. The government decided to intervene when there were labor disputes. There are only four broadcasting companies left in Hong Kong, but you have turned a deaf ear to them. You issued a license to DBC because you felt there was a need in the market. What about today? Has that demand disappeared? Or are you too happy to see that DBC has closed down? I'm not telling the secretary to intervene because you can always say there's nothing we can do to help. Or even, you can tell the shareholders to ask Albert Chang to leave and ask people like Ko Cheng Chi to come in instead. You have to go through the approval of the XCO before the licenses were issued. There were a number of conditions. For example, commitment on investment. And DBC has invested millions of dollars. At the end, they have to stop running the business. So money is not the key. You need at least 10 million or 100 million. So you need a healthy man to get involved. So today, you cannot run any business without involving rich people in order for the public to not feel that there is any interference with mainland capital. I urge the government to resume the broadcasting of DBC or just cut the license. So there will only be seven free channels for the public, and other people can bid for it. Chairman, some people say that Hong Kong people are poor, but we have money. But I think we're so rich that we don't have anything left, not much free entertainment. And the RTHK has become a mouthpiece of the government, and ATV only serves mainlanders. This is the era where we need brave voices to represent local people in this era of suppression. Mr. Albert Chang, perhaps you can do broadcasting on the internet. Thank you. Next, Ms. Pun Shun. Chairman.
Mr. Albert Chang, I'm sorry. DBC的听... 不好意思. Okay. I'm sorry. We are here to show that we're not happy. First of all, I would like to say to the secretary, when it comes to how you judge a commercial dispute, it has directly affected the interest of the listeners. Why are you turning a blind eye to people like myself? You have not done your job. Secondly, for those members who do not support having this public hearing, I don't care who voted for you to put you in this position. You have sworn in to say that you plead allegiance to the PRC. Coming from a very subjective angle, I trust the CCP. But shouldn't you be people-oriented? Shouldn't you serve the people of Hong Kong? So aren't listeners of DBC human beings too? How come we cannot receive your service? Listeners of DBC do not have power or money. We don't have influence. We're talking about elderly people. We just want fairness. What they are asking for is... They just want to know information about what is really going on in the community. If you say that DBC has not done a very good job, I think we are being misled. We would trust you if you can tell us the reasons. But you cannot deal with this incident as a commercial dispute. You are responsible for explaining to us what has happened. Thirdly, you have shown no concern for us. So it is not fair to all the staff members for DBC. It is not fair to the listeners. That's all. Thank you. I have three requests. DBC should resume its broadcasting with the same style of the program. And I urge political members, especially the pro-government camp, to pay attention to people's requests and aspiration. For those who intended to intervene in this incident from the mainland side, we need to investigate. And, Mr. Greg So, I urge you to investigate in details. DBC represents the local culture and innovative industry. This is a channel or a company that has been licensed by the government. They have created very innovative programs. We are not wasting taxpayers' money. I think we need to be fair to the liaison office and the local people. Many people gathered outside of the liaison office exactly because of the fear of intervention. We need to allow... We should be fair to everyone involved. Why should we pay so much money for lawyers and accountants if this is indeed a dispute among the shareholders or a commercial dispute? You're insulting our wisdom. Greg So described this as a commercial dispute, and then he called this a dispute among the shareholders. He said that there's been a default of salary payment of the DBC staff, and there was a default of payment for the Lloyd as well. I think the major shareholders and Lloyd should offer their apology to their staff members. If you don't want to run DBC, you should sell your shares. The listeners can gather money to purchase those shares. Greg So has not done his job. If Greg So cares about our innovative industry, he would have been very proactive and prudent and people-oriented in dealing with the DBC incident. I want to ask Mr. Greg So, shouldn't you pay attention to public interest before you intervene to make some arrangements for the... Olympic Games? So I trust that most local people when they listen to the licensed channels because they support government policies and they support government monitoring. And, Mr. Greg So, has not done his job as the head of the CEDB in supporting innovative industry. Next, Mr. Lee Kai Yu. DBC's slogan is about creating something new. They have changed the lives of many people. And many people who are normally very shy and silent, they have signed up to speak here today. Many people would stay on until 3:00 AM because they want to understand what is happening in Hong Kong. Towards the end of broadcasting of DBC, some people flew back from the States to support DBC. And supporters also include blind people and elderly people who called in to the radio to say that they don't want to let DBC go. And some others have even taken money from their savings and handed the money to Mr. Albert Chang to show some support. Some others have purchased computers to go online to follow the news of DBC on Facebook. And there's this windbreaker produced by DBC. Many people are big fans, although it's of average quality. Some of our relatives asked us to send the windbreakers over.
This is all for supporting DBC. Actually, before the service was to end a few days before, and they actually broadcast, purchased the radio. Why? Because they wanted to show support. And many people went to CGC. Even, you know, I did not go to CGC to support the scrapping of MNE subject. But then I went to CGC for supporting DBC. Many hosts did not pay attention to public affairs before, but they went on hunger strike. Some members of the audience also went on hunger strike. Some members of the public never took part in any social action, but then they did so for DBC. Some members of the public never took part in any social action, but then they did so for DBC. They organized these street donation corners and also they were talking about paying ten dollars less in tax in order to create some trouble for the administration and also the famous Catholic priest also came to support DBC. Many Protestants and also Catholics, including Pastor Zhu Yiming and also Bishop Zen, they all came out to support DBC. And we have now got this litigation fund so that Albert Chang can take the other side to the court. Mr. Albert Chang is saying that he was silenced. So is it as what Gregso said, that Albert Chang is only trying to get sympathy from the public? If that's the case, Gregso is the one who should clarify the issue. And I think the Legco should really apply the Legislative Council powers and privileges ordinance in order to clarify the matter. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Chen Hua Yim.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm a DBC listener. I never thought, however, that Mr. Raymond Wong would call my name here because I never came out as a citizen. I never marched on June 4th on 1st of July. I don't know why I'm taking this first step. But for DBC, I'm making this effort in order to try to strive for relaunching of the service. I was not well yesterday and I informed the clerk that I wouldn't turn up. But then I had to work today, so after work and on the bus, I was listening into the internet and Mr. Albert Chang was saying why four sessions have been cut back to three sessions. And I heard then that some people were kept out because they would not be allowed to come in. However, I therefore decided to come in so that those people who were kept out of the door of Legco would also continue to speak up. DBC, don't give up. I hope you will be relaunched one day. In the past, I used to listen to Radio Hong Kong. But the DJs I really liked were sent away and I didn't know where to turn to. I can go without television. But recently, I was so bored, I turned into one soap opera at 9:30 PM every night on TVB. I liked one of the characters. And then I was thinking that I could be one in the opera and I would like to be one of the characters who would be able to slap Gregso on the face, slap after slap. But then later on, I wouldn't want to watch TV. I want DBC. Last but not least, I hope all of us will work with one heart and one mind to strive for relaunching of the service. Thank you.
Next one. Mr. Ah Wing-Fai, Chairman.
Everybody, it's a Saturday. If we had had DBC, Saturday would be such a lovely day. After five days of work, I would be very tired, but then I would always get up early on Saturday. I would listen into Albert Chang, Andrew Chang, and then Lam Yo Wah. And then I would continue to listen to all those programs while I did housework. And then in the afternoon, I would enjoy other programs. And then I would also tune into a program on tourism. And then after dinner, I would be able to tune into the beautiful broadcast voice of Un Kahlim. What a beautiful world. That's the program. And it was a beautiful world when we had DBC, but it's very unfortunate that DBC went off air. It's just like the weather today. It's dim and gloomy and I could not find any other radio station that could take the place of DBC. I'm just an average member of the public. I would hope that the administration could understand the needs of the public. Please give us a hand. The administration is supported by the people in money and in kind. And we need the administration because the administration serves us. If in a family, the parents are in trouble and if the parents do not support the child, the SWD would come out and take care of the child and would ask the parents to take up the responsibility. If the parents still refuse to take care of the child, then perhaps the SWD will take over the care for the child. In other words, the service cannot stop the labor department. If a company winds up and if there is arrears in wages, the labor department would certainly step forward to help. But the DBC is in trouble and it was still broadcasting, but it was already crying out for help. Where were you, Gregso? Where were you hiding? Somebody said that you are a human voice recorder. I don't think you measure up to it. You're just like a zombie without a soul. You are zombie, Gregso. You would just be droning on like chanting your own charm. You were not addressing issues. You had a bad attitude and you were only saying that you would act according to the procedures. But then are you really following procedures? Did you really take action to follow the procedures in order to monitor and maintain the implementation of licensing conditions? When trouble first started, you should have stepped in to monitor the situation. You should ask the relevant shareholders, including Arthur Lee and the like, to continue to invest. Your time is up.
Next one. Mr. Edward Chin.
I'm deeply concerned about the cessation of DBC's radio service since approximately mid-October of this year. As a current resident of Hong Kong, who have spent the early part of my career in radio broadcasting in Canada, I'm aggrieved by this situation and shunned to think that the fate of DBC was politically motivated. I'm extremely concerned that Hong Kong's freedom of speech and expression has been dampened as exemplified by this incident. Now, as a hedge fund professional who is also a contributing columnist to surf for print and electronic media, I was invited by then-management of DBC to host a radio program called Running the Race, 对冲人生路. In December of last year, the program has no political overtone whatsoever. When DBC was forced to go off-air, Running the Race, 对冲人生路, also had to come to an end. I'm saddened by the fact that the Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, Mr. Gregso, commented that this is just commercial disputes between the shareholders. I believe the government could step in earlier and take action. It is sad news also to realize that the majority of legislators rejected holding an inquiry into DBC's haunting of service. I'm concerned the real reason was of a political nature. Do people dare to speak up for justice or just choose to remain silent?
This is an article that I wrote in Hong Kong Economic Journal and I have said that Hong Kong is living in lies. We should not pretend to sleep. I went to a banquet hosted by the DBC and I was asking, why is it that many people in the government, in the administration, are Christians and Protestants? Why is it that nobody was speaking up for DBC? Mr. Gregso, you are a believer. Please do not pretend to sleep. Of course, he's not here anyway. On this issue of DBC, I think, Gregso, you have not discharged your duty so that the DBC had to stop its, this service. This is what the Bible says. Your big boss is actually God. Don't you know that? I understand that those who stand to sacrifice are the innocent listeners. When DBC went off-air, please do not resort to a play on words in order to tell a big lie together. Please do not betray God and also your conscience just because of the fat salary you enjoy. Next. Mr. Lü Shan Cheng, Chairman. If you do not allow people to earn a salary, it's like killing their parents. Fifty to sixty people have lost their jobs after DBC went off-air and I'm one of them. Mr. Gregso and others have been murderers because they have killed off DBC and also our livelihood. He has said that this is a commercial dispute. I'd like to ask the administration. Is it that if there is a dispute, if both sides will take the matter to court, of course, one will win and one will lose? But then the knot will not be untied. Why don't you try mediation? And your slogan for the people is that to resolve dispute, you should go for mediation first. Why is it that Gregso did not try mediation? You put that API on air, but then you were not preaching. What you said, is it that if there is interference by the mainland or the Beijing Liaison Office, you could not go for mediation? When we lost our jobs at the FTU, we thought that you would help workers, but you did not give any help. What about the DAB? Ms. Ann Chang, the Deputy Chairman of DAB, she said and she said in support of Mr. Eddie Ng that Eddie Ng did something wrong, but he did not have to go off his post. What about DBC? The DBC was just trying to tell the truth. Why should it be folded up? Therefore, it is plain that this is political. From now on, which radio station or TV station would be able to operate freely and smoothly? The ATV is a ridiculous station, but nobody said anything about it. The DBC was so serious about its work and yet it was silenced. I have this thirty-inch diameter TV set at home, but there is no content. However, I have this small radio at home and I know that there is good programming, but now the radio is also silent. What kind of society is this? I must remind people in the public gallery. I'm very tolerant towards you. Every time somebody spoke, you would clap. You don't have to clap when I speak, but please don't interrupt the meeting, all right? Next one. Mr. Chin Hua Lok, Chairman. Chairman. I think you left out Mr. Tam Chuck Lam. You left out, sorry. He will have a go first. Mr. Tam Chuck Lam, good afternoon, Chairman. When the DBC ran into financial trouble, Gregso, the SCED, repeatedly said that the administration would support the development of digital audio broadcasting. He said that his role was to lead the CED Bureau to formulate and promote policies for IT and broadcasting. But from what he did about DBC, we could see that the secretary was totally incompetent. The DBC was about to stop its service and yet Gregso practiced laissez-faire. Albert Chang, Maurice Ho, asked the administration to step in, but he only said that it was not appropriate for the administration to intervene into any dispute amongst shareholders. I'd like Gregso to respond to the following points. Number one, he should investigate into the reasons for the stoppage of service. Was it about poor management or poor account keeping or political suppression? He should directly seek an interview with all the shareholders, including Arthur Lee, David Lee, Wong Po Yan, Wong Tsui Yan, and Ak Lee and Albert Chang and the rest to ask them to come clean on the injecting of funds. Why is it that Gregso never took the initiative to interview shareholders in order to try to understand why they have refused to continue to invest? Is it that because some of the shareholders, including Arthur Lee, David Lee, because they enjoyed special status, so Gregso was not forthcoming in talking to them? And amongst the seven shareholders, Gregso was only asked to have a meeting with Maurice Ho and Albert Chang and he never got in touch with other shareholders. In this circumstance, how could he be sure that this was just a dispute amongst shareholders so that the administration should not intervene? Number three. If DBC complied with licensing conditions and it has got a license for twelve years, why is it that when it had barely formally started to broadcast for a month, there were management problems, it was said? Is it that something went wrong with the licensing-vetting procedure of the administration? And what ways can the administration adopt in order to make sure that public resources would not go in waste? And then number three, if licensees cannot deliver their investment commitment as told to the administration, shouldn't all shareholders be penalized? Your time is up. Next, Mr. Chin Hua Lok.
Chairman, allow me to sing you a song for thirty seconds and see how you feel. Here it goes. How do you feel? Are you shaking with chills? If in the airwave, something like that is being played every day and then sounds like this? Then how would you feel? I'm a supporter of people's power. I hate Albert Chang, but sorry. I believe that it doesn't matter how much you hate one person, but you have to fight for his freedom of speech. So I support DBC to continue to do their broadcasting because freedom of speech is very important. On TV, we see Zhang Xinzhi, Lam Meng Hong talking rubbish every day on TV. You can criticize them as losers, but we will not prevent them from talking. If one day Lam Meng Hong or Zhang Xinzhi, if someone tries to stop them from talking, I will object. A colleague of mine said, freedom of speech is most valuable because it protects the loser so that they can talk rubbish. So a person may be talking rubbish. We still need to protect his rights. Actually, anyone would know that DBC incident is political in nature. If you say otherwise, you're probably an idiot or retarded in my mind. So I personally feel that if you want diversity in the air, you can listen to love songs. Or do you want to hear this? What would you choose? So for the secretary, I would like to offer you this final sentence. That's all from me, Chairman. Next. Madame Chan He May. Oh, it should be Ms. Ruby Kwong. I don't know why exactly I'm sitting here. DBC drew me here. I told my friend yesterday I have to come today and he said it's useless. But I can tell you, if I don't come, that would be more useless. I've been listening to DBC programs for a long time. I have been expressing support for DBC and now the secretary is saying that this is a commercial dispute and the recording has been exposed and people are saying that there is intervention by the liaison office. He is getting paid with public money, money from us. He has responsibility to resolve this, but he hasn't done anything. I'm very angry about this. I don't understand why Bill Wong would say the accounts are very chaotic and he's commissioned a firm to do the books again. Today, I still don't know what is happening. I just want to listen to the radio. Why am I sitting here to talk to you? I don't want to be here. Gregso gets so much money every month. Greg So gets so much money every month, but he hasn't done anything. He has driven us onto the street. Does he have any other solutions for the situation? That's all from me. Next. Miss Chen He May. Chairman. Since the launch of D B C at seven A M., I started listening until I finished my work. I have to be on the street all the time. I have three radios on me because I'm afraid I will miss any program from D B C. Now, there's nothing left. The rest are just rubbish. I just want to listen to the radio. I want to know. You always say this is political suppression. You accuse them of having a very chaotic account. Can you tell us what it is? I want to know what has happened. Why are you keeping all the secret? I suspect Bill Wong and Andrew Chang have cheated me. I've purchased so many radios, and today they're just rubbish. Sometimes I will take them out to listen to other channels. There are so many members in this panel, but only a few are here today. I don't know what can be done. I don't expect you to do much for me. I'm just here to vent my grievance. I hope that Mister Bill Wong, since you're so rich, you can do so many things. Can you purchase our radios? Because they have become rubbish now. I don't want to send them to the landfill. Greg So asked us to listen to rubbish channels. The other channels should do reruns all day long. I've been listening to A M., and now that I have to go back to A M. radio channels again. I have become accustomed to the D A B. Now, sometimes I will switch over to A M. and F M. channels. I simply don't know what they're saying. It's like noise. I don't really follow what they say, and I don't really care. Sometimes I will tune in to see if there's any sound coming from D B C. I keep hoping that one day I will hear something. We just want to listen to the radio. I don't know why we have come here today being so weepy and sad. Chairman, I don't know how this meeting can be helpful in any way for us. Next, Madame Chen Wei Kun. Four things, Chairman. First of all, I urge people who love rule of law and human rights and freedom, support investigation into D B C cessation of services. Four shareholders withdrew their investment. They worked with the government to suppress freedom of speech. The four shareholders who refused to inject money have done a number of damaging things to others. They refused to sell the shares. There was a salary default, but they engaged big teams of auditors and lawyers to interfere with Albert Chang and Mister Maurice Ho. I believe that the programs are of high quality, and the hosts are outstanding. They were willing to do it for free because they want to serve the public. The four shareholders, why do you want to kill D B C? Thirdly, Mister Greg So, you have not done your job because you have not promoted the innovative industry. You do not realize that people are losing their choices. You are not just any civil servant. You are an accountable government official. What you have done is really below par. Mister So, you keep repeating the same answers. You are not responding to the real questions. It only shows how incompetent you are. And the support for the loans camp will only decline. If I were Mister Greg So, I would resign. And Mister Albert Chang received the court order right after Mister Greg So offered his comments. Legal members should have independent thinking. You need to consider the requests from the public. If someone questions the real date of the recording, if the withdrawal of investment is not related to liaison office, then you need to prove to us. Finally, for the pro-government camp members, you can change your mind now. Stop being the public's enemy. I urge sixty-nine members to support the investigation of the true reasons behind the cessation of broadcasting of D B C. Thank you. Next, Miss Janice Feng. Thank you, Chairman. The Lion Rock Institute believes that when there are problems with operation, any enterprise should be held responsible. We object to putting the blame on the government. The institute urges the government to auction off the license. Members of the audience in the public gallery, please do not interfere with the proceedings. Albert Chang, you have a failed business, but you can always start again. You can have another radio company. If it is of high quality, people will support you. The Lion Rock Institute believes that if Albert Chang really has good market share, you can find new shareholders repurchase the license and run the broadcasting business again. If we really need Albert Chang to speak for the local people, perhaps he can take up a job at R T H K. But we know that is wrong because that is a local government interfering with the autonomy of the local radio channels and affecting their dependence. Any media or radio shows, if you're not independent, you will only become brainwashing tool from the government. In order to protect independent thinking and freedom of speech of local people, local media should be operated independently from the government. The Lion Rock Institute believes that the government should not interfere with digital broadcasting or the operation of any member of the media. Finally, on behalf of the research head of the Lion Rock Institute, we want to thank Mister Albert Chang. If so many people listen to D B C, then Mister Xing Parkman will become very famous. Members of the public and friends inside the chamber. You have to listen to things that you may not like. You can have a debate. You can respond, but please do not create any hassle to the speakers, okay? Mister Albert Ho is going to respond in a minute as well. Please be patient. As that other person said, even if it's nonsense, as long as it's someone's freedom of speech, we should support it, miss any law. I don't know what Lion Rock Institute is. That is rubbish. They have never listened to D B C. Now she's leaving. Stop. I have already said. Stop it. Please continue. Can you do the timing again? Thank you. This Miss Feng has not listened to D B C. She does not know what D B C is about. I think she just read out a speech. Someone put her here. Now go back to what I want to say. We all know that what she said was rubbish. It's been thirty-four days since the cessation of broadcasting of D B C. I want to know what Greg So has done. I can't tell you. He's done nothing. He has inherited the function of Mister Stephen Lam.
And he has acted as a human voice recorder, and the administration is saying that this is just about a commercial dispute. I'd just like to know if a child doesn't go to school. Can you just say this is a family dispute, and the school has no responsibility and no right to interfere? I am a teacher. So Mister Lem Yew Wah and Mister Lai Chat Phan attended the special meeting of the I T B P and said that Mister Greg So was dead wood. I think they were right. I think they took the words out of many D B C listeners. I'm a teacher. After SARS or avian flu, if there are students or if there are three students who are affected by fever or other illnesses, and they don't come to school, we have to report to the Department of Health. So we are very concerned about the health of students. If a student is off from school for two days, the teachers would have to call up the family to follow up, to see whether the student is in hospital and how he can keep up with his schoolwork. The school is a very small organization, and yet we do things in such a strict manner. What about the administration? You are serving seven million people, Mister Greg So. You get a salary of three hundred thousand dollars, but teachers only get thirty thousand. You get ten times our salary, so you should do ten times what we do. Ever since the crisis or the possibility of D B C going off air, they should have already done something to prevent it from happening. And at least you should tune into their programs because you're a monitoring body, and you want to know the quality of their programs and know the response of the public, et cetera. But have you done anything? Are you worth the three hundred thousand dollars you get? To me, the D B C has helped to link up Chinese people all around the world. I think just now the lady who spoke never tuned into D B C. Actually, many people would call up D B C to say that they love the D B C programming. There was a Singaporean who called in. It was a Singaporean, not a Hong Kong person. I remember D B C really allowed overseas Chinese to be gathered together. And also it's a platform for the exercise of freedom of speech. I think society has to have criticism before it can progress. This is just a plain kind of theory, and you should understand it. Last but not least, sorry, your time is up. Next. Miss Wong Wing Yan.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I'm just an average member of the public. I am also a D B C listener. We should thank the representative of the Lion Rock Institute because after listening to her, now we know what the Lion Rock Institute is like, so we should thank her. Before I came, I was on tenterhooks because I had never spoken up about anything, and I never showed any concern towards politics. But this year, we had the moral and national education issue, and then we have D B C. And now I can really feel that there is a threat of our freedom of speech being deprived of us. I think this is having a depth and width that should warrant our concern. For myself and for my next generation, I have to speak up. Whenever there is an opportunity for me to do so, I have to speak up.
This morning, I was listening in to the live broadcast of the previous two sessions. The secretary has always packaged the D B C incident as a commercial dispute, but actually, the political oppression is such that he has not truly and really responded to the incident. I think he should seek an understanding into the incident and investigate into it, and then be accountable to the public. As a consumer, I have purchased the digital radio, and now there is no D B C service who can repay us for our monetary loss. But what is more important is our spiritual loss. Who can compensate it? I have loved D B C, and whenever I could find the time, I would tune into D B C. And my family members were saying that I was brain rushed by D B C. I said, well, yes, if it's good brainwashing, I don't mind. I'm still in fear, but I am telling myself that I'm here to fight for my freedom of speech. I'm saying the right thing. I shouldn't be fearful. If I were really fearful, I would have left. I would have gone, and that is what Mister Greg So has done. I shouldn't be afraid because I'm speaking from conscience. Those who acted against their conscience dare not sit here to face us, so we shouldn't be afraid. And I would ask the administration to promise to set up an independent committee to investigate into D B C, to return justice to D B C, and also be accountable to the public. I support the relaunch of D B C so that there will be freedom of speech for the public. Next one, Miss Chan Cam Lin.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm a listener of D B C. I have purchased four digital radios. I would start from seven A M. to late into the night, and I would listen in to Albert Ho and other hosts of D B C. I did not tune into other digital broadcasting channels. D B C was a new digital broadcaster, but it stopped its service shortly after it had launched its service formally.
I don't want to see this. Mister Greg So sat with folded arms. He did not do coordination. He did not stand standing into the trouble that had arisen amongst the shareholders. Why is it that the shareholders could not continue to invest according to the agreement? Why is it that Greg So is not at the meeting? He has shown contempt towards listeners of D B C. Greg So should step down. D B C shareholders included Arthur Lee, who is an executive council member, and also David Lee, a banker, and also Wong Tsui Yan, an industrialist. They are very famous Hong Kong personalities. Why is it that they did not care about their image and their reputation and just stopped the investment? They should act according to the agreement and continue to invest. They should come clean in front of the public. They should not ignore the needs of the listeners, especially the elderly people. I hope D B C will be revived one day. Thank you. Right. Next, Miss Lem Wei Phan.
Thank you. D B C has got seven channels to cater to the needs of different parts of the audience, including the ethnic minorities. It was really very entertaining programming for different people in the audience. Elderly people were disadvantaged, but then they would save up in order to buy digital radios so that they would have one in bedroom and another one in the toilet and around the house. And some elderly people said that now without the program by Mister Ma Yun Chao at night, they would have to take sleeping pills, and they were crying all the time because they could not sleep. It is like a close relative has left us. You said you would respect the elderly people, but then you are not qualified to say you respect the elderly because you have taken away the famous or the favorable programming from them. And the C E said that he would be humble in listening to the public. He would be people-oriented to serve the seven million people in Hong Kong. And if there are conflicts between the mainland and Hong Kong people, he would stand on the side of Hong Kong people. But now he is standing on the opposite side of the people, and he is relying on the mainland in order to stifle freedom of speech by closing of radio stations. Miss Elsie Leung said that she would have her freedom of speech, and the Beijing liaison office seems to be interfered into the freedom of speech, and they are not delivering the promise of Hong Kong people ruling Hong Kong. I have heard the elderly people say that even if they are above eighty, they would be happy to use a walker in order to come forward to march. I never took part in any marches, but now the administration has angered the public, and now people are saying that they would rather have Chris Patton come back to rule Hong Kong instead of having the mainland take away our human rights and freedom of speech. The administration should adopt an open attitude to take on board different views. And if you have done something wrong, you should apologize and rectify your act. If you have done nothing wrong, why are you afraid of the criticism of the public? Now you seem to want to silence people. Yes, you have silenced the D B C. But then you cannot silence the people, and you would only make your governance even more difficult because when you push people into a corner, they will return to fight you. I hope you will think twice about what you did and allow the D B C to be revived. We are not anti-government. Many people like the D B C. Many people like the DBC because, uh, they're all stars, their hosts are all stars. And DBC was making use of public airwaves, which is a public asset. The public airwaves did not belong to Albert Chang, but now it is silenced and it is like our rights have been taken away from us. Not oppressing, uh, Albert Chang, but people in Hong Kong.
Mr. Cody Wong. I'm a speech and debate instructor and I have taken part in many, um, voluntary programming, uh, acts at CGC. I was one of the hosts and I was also involved in the, uh, reform of ATV. I took part as a volunteer. This time around, Mr. Greg So is not here to attend a meeting and he has not done a good job because he adopted an attitude as if there was nothing to do with him and he said that he would not interfere. But now I have tucked up a lot of information with regard to ATV because it faced a shortage of funds. And I could quote from the example of the then S C E D, uh, Mrs. Lau. At that time, Mr. Chiang Wing Lam, the CEO of ATV, said in twenty oh nine that ATV was about to collapse because there was no money to make programs or to pay people salaries. At that time, Mrs. Lau, the secretary, took the initiative to show concern towards the finances of ATV. There was, there were a lot of meetings and other kinds of liaison and she also clarified many times on the media, saying that even if there were two free-to-air TV services, the administration would not allow one of them to go off air easily. If there was financial trouble and other reasons stopping it from delivering service, the administration would take over ATV temporarily, um, in order for it to put its act together and then a new license would be issued. In other words, no TV license, uh, should be stopped easily. And then in twenty ten, there was a similar, uh, shareholding dispute. Chi Hin-Ming and Chi Mao-sing and Wong Jeng had a dispute about their shareholding and Chi Hin-Ming, uh, actually applied for liquidation of ATV. And then Mrs. Lau again proactively showed concern and she required a, uh, the T, ATV to continue to operate, um, properly or else she would intervene. So the secretary is not here, he has run away from us. But then there are officials here. I would not make life difficult for you. I will ask you as an easy, easy question. Let's ask you about ATV. Do you think Mrs. Lau did a good job? Secondly, if today, if TVB and ATV should be involved in a shareholding dispute and then there was immediate, immediate stoppage of service, what would you do? And I'd like to know whether there are DAB representatives. Sorry, um, even Mrs. Regina Ip has left. There are no pro-establishment members here. Well, great, great. I hope some pro-establishment, um, members could respond. Can you not, uh, respond to the incident? Sorry, your time is up. Next one, Mr. Lee Fook Keng.
Thank you Chairman. I'm just an average member of the public. I belong to no political party. I'm here to tell you what an average member of the public thinks about the incident. I sit here and I can see the factions. Well, Mr. Andrew Paxton Sun, he was drunk on the media and now he is taking advantage of the situation. Of course, there is oppression. The so-called academics are now taking advantage of the situation. And in the end, uh, the ladies said that, uh, Mr. Andrew Paxton Sun would have been a hot star, um, thanks to Andrew Chang, but he became famous because he was drunk on the media. Many people listened in to DBC and it provided many different channels, including one for the ethnic minorities.
Have you thought about the ethnic minorities? Perhaps yes, but not much. DBC has done a great job in this sense, providing entertainment to all. So Greg So is not here because he doesn't want to listen to us. You are interfering with freedom of expression. We can feel it. We urge members to address this and find the reasons behind the story. We really want Leshka members to help us. It's too bad that the DAB is not going to help. They have all the money. Let's say that you may be the most credible political party, but you are turning a blind eye to this. So on behalf of the citizens, I urge political parties to address this issue. Thank you. For the third session of public hearing, the final speaker, Mr. Matt Yun-siao. Thank you. Just like all the citizens in Hong Kong, I have never thought that I would be sitting here to speak. I never imagined that I would be chanting slogans outside the C H L. As an experienced broadcaster, I'm truly saddened. I'm here not just to speak on behalf of DBC, but all the listeners. Some friends have left messages on my Facebook saying that their mothers kept asking, "When will Mr. Beck be back from the holiday?" It may sound funny, but it's truly sad. If you have listened to DBC programs, especially on the last day, many elderly people called in and they were crying. We also heard the voices of innocent children saying that they want to listen to our programs. DBC has different voices. Albert Chang. We also have voices providing good vibes to the public. On our Facebook, citizens don't know what else to say. Sometimes I want to reply, but I don't know what to say either. On this incident, as a member of the staff or a normal citizen, we feel hopeless. We feel helpless. We don't know what to do. As many people have said, sometimes the Labor Department would intervene, but nobody has done anything for our staff. I've signed a three-year contract. If there is a case of bankruptcy, I will not receive any pay. I don't do this for money. I do this because I feel there is a sense of mission. I want to provide positive energy to members of the public in Hong Kong. The DBC broadcasting room is now left vacant. Mr. So has been saying that he cannot interfere. There should be no intervention. I think that is a very dangerous example. I urge him to use something different. He should focus on caring for the public. He should express care for the incident. He's not an adjudicator. He should adhere to the public interest. We don't want to set this poor example. Hopefully, no other government officials will follow you. Thank you. Before our members speak, I would like to say that our public gallery is full and there are others, other supporters of DBC who want to come up, but there's no room because we cannot allow them to use the seats for the press. We only have forty minutes until the end of this meeting. One round for questioning, each person three minutes. But I will allow Mr. Morris Ho and Albert Chang, the two victims, to respond to the comments offered by your supporters. There was only one who did not support you, so I can give you two, five minutes. As for government officials, the, we have from the administration, um, Mr. Zhou Wong, but he cannot respond in, on behalf of Mr. Greg So. Most of the comments targeted Mr. Greg So. We do not expect Mr. Zhou Wong to respond on behalf of Mr. So. But if any members of the public raised some points or asked questions, therefore, under your terms of reference, I believe that Mr. Zhou Wong will have to respond. Now, Albert Chang.
Thank you Chairman. Eighty people came for this public hearing to express their support for DBC. I myself and Mr. Morris Ho and all our staff members are very touched. I did not realize that there would be so many listeners of a radio program who would come out to express support like this. I believe that before we ceased broadcasting, we knew there was no future, there was no salary, but we stayed on until the final moment. As I've said in the second session today, for quite some time, we did not follow the licensing condition concerning financial ingestion to support the operation of the business. On the twenty first of September, the government said that was the formal launch of DBC and the company ran out of money because on the eleventh of September, we already used all the assets. We continued broadcasting just because of the support of our listeners. Two members from the FC side, a one, Mr. Wu Na-gong for the IT sector and then Mr. Ma Feng-coh, who represent the media side. I urge them to be responsible and investigate into the incident. It's regrettable that the Lion Rock Institute speaker, well, first, my apology because our supporters expressed some negative sentiment towards her and she left afterwards. Actually, they released this written statement saying that the government should not inject money to save DBC. This is supposed to be an institute with learned people. I don't understand why they have such, said such thing. DBC listeners or Leshka members have never, not even one person has ever asked the government to inject money to save DBC. That is ridiculous. Secondly, in two thousand four, Mr. Chairman, you and I, after we stopped our radio show, we said we would run radio programs for free. And why would RTHK hire me back? That is again quite ridiculous. So this Lion Rock Institute, perhaps you need to learn something first. Stop pretending to be a think tank. You have not done any research. You have just chanted something ridiculous and made no sense. More importantly, in the coming weeks for DBC or in the coming month, if we do not resolve the financial problem, we may go into bankruptcy because we have too much debt and some debtors have already pursued legal process. And then our license will be refilled automatically. This is according to the telecom ordinance as mentioned. So in the coming weeks, if we cannot resolve the matter with the majority of our shareholders, if we, if they continue to refuse to inject money into the business, if they insist on liquidation, there will be no hope of resumption of broadcasting. I have heard from all of the supporters saying that they strongly support us spiritually, physically and also financially. Hopefully, one day, uh, you will hear my voice again in the air. This is a really humble request. A broadcaster just wants to be heard in the air. Thank you very much. That shouldn't be too much to ask. I've been asking for the same for many years. It hasn't happened yet. Mr. Morris Ho. I think Mr. Albert Chang has already said a lot that I wanted to say. Once again, I would like to thank all the listeners and all the DBC supporters. There are many firsts here. It's the first time for us to gather our courage to come to Leshka. We have, uh, done a lot of preparation for our speeches. I suppose your support is not for the two of us or Mr. Ronald Oakley to continue the operation of DBC, but rather the support for Hong Kong to go on so that we can see a brighter future. I want to take this opportunity to once again say to the staff of DBC that all along, there is this accusation of poor management and bookkeeping, targeting the management staff. But these accusations were not true. Actually, our previous CFO, who was CPPA, he organized clearly all the monthly income and expenses and we provided answers to any queries. Nothing went wrong ever concerning the bookkeeping. No queries from the shareholders. In June, we engaged the auditor, KPMG, one of the big fours in Hong Kong, to audit our accounts and the report was also submitted to our shareholders. When the so-called dispute started, saying that the accounts were not clear, accountants came in to check all the accounts and that took four months. Our accounting department and all, all, nearly all the documents were photocopied to be reviewed page by page. If some shareholders felt that the accounts were not clear, they had enough information to look at the whole account. The Lloyd came in in mid-June. Again, in our books, everything was done again, then submitted to shareholders under court. So three different organizations have done our accounts three times in total. If today, somebody should still say that our accounts are not kept properly, I think that could be quite an irresponsible statement. Now I'd like to thank you again because of your support and encouragement. I believe Albert Chang and I will continue to speak up on your behalf. We have been very much encouraged. Whenever Chang and I are silent, there are still listeners speaking on our behalf. Thank you very much. Next, I'll invite the administration to respond. Deas, thank you, thank you Chairman. Uh, PS, five minutes. Five minutes. We have heard the views of deputations. We will take them back for consideration. Our policy is to encourage digital broadcasting. We would like digital broadcasting to continue to develop. And we hope that shareholders could adopt a pragmatic approach to resolve the problem and we hope that the problem will be resolved. Just now, one deputation said that with regard to the ATV shareholder dispute, the then SCED was involved. Now, my understanding, this is my understanding, because I now have no time to check the records. My understanding was what was done then was that the SCED then tried to seek an understanding into the change of the principal officers. And the SCED then tried to seek an understanding into the issue. But with regard to the dispute of shareholders, that was not the subject of involvement by the then SCED, but this is my understanding. Okay, I will take your views back to the bureau. Can I uh, respond by rectifying the record? I'd like to remind the PS. And Mrs. Lau actually interfered into a lack of funds at ATV. This is just to supply some information. Thank you. Okay, members can now speak. Three minutes each. I have in the queue, Xin Chung Kai, Charles Peter Mock. Any other members who would like to speak, you have to raise your hand now because I'd like to draw a line. Leng Kwok Hong and Claudia Mo. Raymond Chan. Ma Fengkou, are you going to speak? Okay. Three minutes each. Chairman, I have a very simple question. I have heard the DBC listeners and members of the public. I'd like to thank you for showing concern towards this matter. Well, this morning, I asked the same question. You said that the administration should intervene, but I have not heard anything concrete. What kind of intervention would you like to see from the administration? Would any deputation like to speak up? Chiang Hua Yan.
The views of the listeners is that you actually do something, especially for pro-establishment members, to support us and that you would set up a task force to look into the matter. We want the truth. We want to know what actually happened. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Wong Chihei. Yes, we definitely need some intervention because what you did for ATV and DBC have been very different. DBC has been the only broadcasting station that actually ran some programs. Then why did you help ATV and not DBC? Xin Chung Kai. I'd like to ask a question of Morris Ho. He said this morning that the two groups of shareholders had a difference of opinion with regard to injection of funds and buying back shares or selling shares, etc. Mr. Ho, if you don't mind, can you let me know the biggest difference in opinion? Did you talk about the prospect of DBC? What kind of dispute actually was there? Morris.
From a commercial perspective, I really don't know what is happening. Albert and I had a strong aspiration that DBC should continue to function. We have already built the audience base and digital broadcasting can help to promote freedom of communication and information. We only have ten odd seconds. Sorry to stop you. How much funding would you need for operation for how many months before you can break even? Morris. DBC is in such a situation, we might have to reevaluate the situation. But the last time we asked for an injection of funds, we said it should be fifty million dollars and we should be able to maintain a break-even budget until next August. Mr. Charles Peter Mock, I'd like to thank the third batch of deputations. In this session, the secretary is absent and I don't think what you have asked could be answered. Even if he were here, he wouldn't be able to answer you. Now, we have got this public hearing already, so what is the next step? And the deputations are clear with their aspiration and that is, hopefully, we can set up a task force. But then there is not a big chance of doing this. You have to lobby the pro-establishment camp so that they can support such a proposal in the main meeting of the Legco. All pan-democrats support you. But you know how big a chance there is for that task force to be set up. I'd like to ask the same question as Mr. Wong Chihei and I actually mentioned the same thing this morning. The more I listen, um, if you compare this situation with ATV and this morning, the secretary said that he could have tackled the transmission rights of the Olympic Games, but not other matters. And you can see that he doesn't need a legal backing for dealing with these matters. He said that he could adopt different approaches. He could get personal in a way. Now, if that is what the administration is doing, actually, the administration is the regulator because he is issuing the licenses. If there is this inconsistent approach, I think it's a big problem. I don't think the officials present can answer the question because this should be answered by an accountability official. I'd like to fill up on a question asked by some deputations. What can these people who have purchased radios do? What kind of action can they pursue? Can the administration tell them who they should pursue, the DBC company or the shareholders or who? They can listening, they can listen in to other digital stations, but they have wanted the radios to listen to DBC. So is it that they can only blame themselves for having trusted the wrong people? I don't think the administration can answer you that question. The purchase of a radio is the act of purchasing. If you have wanted the radio to just listen to DBC, then you should have said so because there are now other digital channels and maybe Mr. Albert Ho can answer or Mr. Albert Chang can answer. You ask people to buy the radios. Sorry, Chairman. Sorry, I beg to differ from what you said because when people bought the digital radio, I believe most of the consumers and also who are present were hoping to listen in to DBC. Your time is up. Well, I think the officials can try. Well, that was my view. If the officials would like to answer you, they can. I sell them. Express my views. I actually stood in a a street station to help them sell the radios. PS, any response? Chairman. I do agree that actually there are other digital channels available and the radio is still useful. And also, the purchasing of the radio was a free act. Next one, Leng Kwok Hong. Chairman. First, I hope that you, Chairman, will ask Ms. Su Si Ho this question. Why is Greg so busy this afternoon? He is the Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development. He could have some rest, but then he knows that we are holding a public hearing at the council. Why is he absent? Chairman, can you ask where he is now? If he has an appointment, when was it fixed? Was it fixed? After knowing about this hearing? Would he be having a meal with Bill Wong? PS, can you answer why the secretary was absent in sessions two and three? Who is he with? Is he at a meeting? Chairman, I understand the secretary has other matters to attend to. What other matters does he have to attend to? People in the public gallery. Order, please. Mr. Leng Kwok Hong is asking a question. Chairman, I would regret Mr. Greg so formally. First, this council monitors the work of the administration. This is what the Basic Law asks us to do. We are holding a public hearing and we are asking the public to help monitor the administration and he dares say that he has other matters to attend to. His uh, his purview, his scope of work includes information technology. Please recall that he should be regretted. Si Wai Lung is now at the Youth Square. He is now being surrounded by a lot of young people in Taiwan. Maybe Mr. Greg So is helping to fend off the youngsters. Secondly, Ms. Su Si Ho, I will ask you again. You are adopting a muddled approach. Should Mr. Justice Andrew Lee Kwok Ng be called in to investigate the matter? Do you think this should be done? What is your view? PS. You shouldn't use the word intervention because according to the laws of Hong Kong, they should safeguard Hong Kong people's right to information. Do you think an investigation should be conducted? Yes or no? PS. Please answer the question by Mr. Leng Kwok Hong. Thank you, Chairman. From my perspective, what I can see is that the council is handling the matter. There will be a motion and we'll have to see how the motion is handled. If you ask me, we can see that it is a dispute. Then you can investigate. Well, we hope that it will be resolved. Sorry, time is up. Next one, Claudia Mo.
I find it most regrettable that today we are talking about choice for the people, that Hong Kong should be a diversified society and also freedom of broadcasting. And yet we have the officials from the Commerce and Economic Development and yet the secretary for the bureau is not here. Freedom of the press, freedom of speech, and yet the CED Bureau is here to represent the administration and you cannot blame them for not giving you the answers you need. I strongly uh, regret the secretary. Mr. Leng Kwok Hong is saying that Mr. Greg So should be reprimanded and I think that it is absolutely necessary to reprimand Mr. Greg So. Would anybody object? No, right? I would also agree that the word intervention may not be the right word to use. My view is that since these issues are subsumed under Commerce and Economic Development, it's just like when we talk about animal rights. We have to go to the Food Safety and Environment Hygiene Panel. I I think such political wording is really baffling. My question for you is frankly speaking, it was said a moment ago that the council is now tackling the matter and we'd like to see how it goes and the administration will follow up. From nine o'clock this morning, we have had this hearing and public views are heard and some people have given you rather impassioned reaction. But what can be done afterwards? The House has vetoed our proposal and I don't think there is a good chance for this to go back to the council.
So are we going to gather all the members of the public to resist the power of the pro-government camp? Because there will be no inquiry and no judge involved. Is it going to go through natural death? This is the final session of the public hearing. What do you think, all the deputations? Anyone like to respond? Ms. Pun?
I want the government officials to do their work. Legislators, do your work. Do what you're supposed to do. Do you hear me? We need to establish this local power. But the pro-government camp doesn't care. Then I do not care.
I want to provide some information to Ms. Mo. Under the CEDB, they also have the Telecom Branch and Broadcasting Office. You may not be happy. They wanted to set up another bureau, but I objected to that. But it doesn't matter what the name of the bureau is. According to the TO, they have to do their job. It's just provision of information. Next, Mr. Chan Shichun. Chairman, I want to ask Ms. Ho one thing. Mrs. Rita Lau, the former secretary, intervened into some disputes in the mass media. So was that an exception or is this DBC incident an exception? Can you tell us? I think we all want to know, although Mr. So cannot come today. We want to get an answer. We've been listening for so long. People who dare to speak don't have the opportunity. And those who speak a lot don't really have courage. Outsiders may feel that there's only one radio program in Hong Kong and now that it's gone, everyone is crying. No, we have many FM channels. Why don't these people listen to FM channels? Perhaps the administration needs to go back and think about this. Are there big problems with those channels? When they renew the licenses in the future, please make sure you come out and tell them how poorly they have done their job, saying no to their renewal. Don't just come out this time. Some people said that DBC organizes people to many social events, but there is no media coverage. If you think there's a blockage of media coverage, you should complain because number of complaints will reflect what you want. I urge you to do that. What can we do now? This is ITBP. We've got this meeting and we decided that we should use the special power and privilege legislation to have this public hearing, but some people say that that is the ultimate tool. It's like a nuclear bomb, which is not to be used casually. I've been here all day because I did not want any abortion of the meeting. Some other members did not show up. Since day one, we understand what you want, but the pro-government camp members, they need to rethink deeply what they have done. We need to be fair to DBC. We need to be fair to the liaison office as well. If indeed there was no intervention, we can have a special meeting. We can ask people to come. Mr. Bill Wong can come. We can ask them what happened. You should not say that we're framing the liaison office or the SAR government. We also have the plenary session. We can reconsider this issue again. On the fifth of December, Mr. Albert Chang is going to raise a motion asking that according to the Special Powers and Privilege Ordinance, we should investigate the DBC incident. When the motion was moved at this panel, it was endorsed, but it was vetoed by the House Committee, but according to our rules of procedures, he can raise it at our plenary meeting. Next, Mr. Ma Fengkou.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming to express your views. I did not plan to speak today. I just wanted to listen to you. I had to officiate another event, so I was away for one and a half hours. officiate another event, so I was away for one and a half hours. I was here for the rest of the time. I'm very concerned about this. First of all, the competitive environment in terms of the broadcasting business, is it going to be affected? The previous CE has said that Hong Kong should become a broadcasting hub, and I support that. Concerning this incident, I'm very concerned because many people lost their jobs. They had high hopes for a new challenge, a new working environment. But because of this incident, many people lost their jobs. Another thing is there are many listeners who are big fans, and they will have fewer choices from now on. So I'm very concerned about this incident. I met with Mr. So. At other occasions, I have said to him that the government should be very concerned about this, and they should try their best to do some coordinating work. When we were talking about broadcasting Olympic Games on cable TV, I urged the government to intervene. But for the DBC incident, I did not write any article to ask the government to intervene, because the two incidents are different. Last time, when there were the Olympic Games, we have to take care of public interest. There should be free broadcasting for all to watch. But this time, the conflict is between two groups of shareholders who have very different views. So the nature is very different. I want the government to coordinate and try to salvage the situation. I don't want to repeat what Mrs. So said, but I was disappointed. And later on, I wanted to be unbiased. If two groups of shareholders have very different views, and they made public the conflicts, they blamed each other, it would be very difficult to approach this matter objectively. Can you give me the time? Your time is up. Your time is up. We have five minutes left. We have to end the meeting. Everyone has spoken. Now it's my turn. I have five minutes. We have received 193 submissions. After we have set the date and time for this public hearing, this special meeting, we have received 193 written submissions. The majority of them support the resumption of broadcasting for DBC. Eighty-three people have signed up to attend this special meeting. Our arrangement is that we can have three sessions. More than eighty-three people, we can have a fourth session. At the end, only eighty-three people signed up. So that is the fact. We don't want any one of you to say, oh, one session was deleted. One hundred ninety-three submissions. We planned to have four sessions, because we thought one hundred ninety-three people have written submissions, perhaps more than 100 people would come. But at the end, we only received eighty-three applications for attendance to express views. So we, at the end, had three sessions. Some people have turned up, and some of you already in the public gallery, you've been clapping your hands a lot today. Actually, that is not allowed. We don't have pro-government camp members here, so I'm not too worried. But you cannot disturb other people while they are talking.
Albert Chang wanted to clarify something, so I'll give you my two minutes. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Ma Feng Kuang said he's concerned about this. I know Ma Feng Kuang is indeed concerned about this incident, but I would like to clarify one thing. Me with Maurice and Ronald have submitted a statement to the administration, saying that we have the capacity to resume broadcasting of DBC right away. I just want to clarify that. Okay, next regular meeting, 10th of December, 2:00 p.m. on a Monday. Meeting adjourned.